Please stand for the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Edir.
Here.
Ms. Sevegic.
Here.
Ms. Skilbo.
Here.
Mr. Shad.
Here.
Mr. Hunter. Mrs. Sandersen.
The record showed that Mrs. Sandersen said she was on her way from work to be here so she could get here.
Likewise with Mr. Hunter. He drives in from Worcester.
Okay. I need a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda for regular working hours of June 2019.
If I can make a motion to approve the agenda for August 13, 2019.
In a second, Ted. Is there any discussion?
Madam President, there's something that I don't see on the agenda that we had discussed in executive session, a meeting or so ago. So, without divulging anything, is that going to be excluded?
I'm sorry, finish.
It was an appeal.
I got a call and that's on hold.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's on hold. That's why it's not here.
And other than that, if there's nothing else, the order of business does not need to be altered?
There was one thing that Miss Sandersen wanted on, and I did talk to Mr. Genetti, and that was about travel to Miami, Florida, to a huge conference in September, but she didn't have a cost. So, Mr. Genetti would like to get a cost first to bring it through.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Roll. Ms. Skilbo.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy. Ms. Jacklin Edir.
Yes.
Mrs. Sevegic.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter. Ms. Anderson. Mr. Shad, yes. Four zero motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I don't see anybody. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the board? Someone passed out. We don't have any more recommendations at this time.
I do, Madam President.
Oh, what's that, Mrs. Edir?
And we skipped the approval of minutes.
Oh, sure did. I'm sorry.
And so, yeah, I, yeah, so, Mr. Genetti isn't here. There are no minutes. So, I guess we'll have to hold off on that once again.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I just got the message from him that he would not be able to attend. I spoke to him yesterday. He said he would be here. So, maybe some state business or something came up with a disrepute. But I don't know what that is. I guess he will explain that himself. So, we won't have a treachery report tonight.
No.
We'll move on to our support.
I do have a question, just for the record. I asked in a previous meeting, who, in this Novicki's absence, who's doing the minutes? It's supposed to be his responsibility. That's what the law says. So, does any, do you have an answer to that, Madam President?
I don't. As far as I know, everything was his responsibility, and he's supposed to be taking care of it. If he has someone else that's going to do it or that's working on it, I don't have any idea.
Okay.
The record showed that Miss Sandersen has entered a meeting at 4:35 PM. Welcome, Miss Sandersen. So, what went on with the super team?
Oh, no, I do have a request, board presentations or recommendations. If I may, Madam President, I recently became aware of information concerning a movement by parties known and unknown that plan to build dorm-like structures behind P. Ross Berry, which is located on the far east side of the city. I and others who reside in neighborhoods surrounding the school have never been involved in any discussion, nor have we been given an opportunity to express our opinions about this move. I attended a block watch meeting last Thursday where Eastsiders, some of whom do not live in the immediate area, gathered to express their concerns and displeasure about this idea. We learned that our second ward council rep, TJ Rogers, as well as CEO Jennings, did not know, did not know about this plan. We also learned that Pastor Donaldson, the pastor of Rising Star Baptist Church located on Mortal Avenue, not in the immediate area, had been attending a series of meetings with Judge Delik and others. He doesn't live anywhere on the east side, and I believe he lives somewhere on the south side. Pastor Harrison, Union Baptist Church on the lower north side, also hasn't been involved in these meetings. He not only doesn't live in the area, but actually lives in Medina, Ohio. My concern as a member of this board, school board, and especially as a resident of the east side, is simply, how dare they? This board, once again, has been excluded from any decision-making authority, even when Delik and this group dared to talk about leasing land from the district. I'd like to know who from the district made that decision. So, I'm stating on behalf of my neighbors that we do not want those buildings constructed behind P. Ross Berry, and for that matter, anywhere else on the east side. Madam President, Mr. Moranto indicated at a previous meeting that he would invite Jennifer Merritt to a board meeting to present information about the district's relationship with that school. I didn't know about it at that time, about this dorm thing at that time. Since then, this new information has come to light, so I will also invite Judge Delik to attend so that we can hear firsthand what her plans are for our children. And so that she can hear firsthand where I stand and perhaps other board members stand on this issue. Especially based on her televised statement, we have, we should have, she's telling us, we could have come to her with our concerns. Yes, we could have, had we known about it. So, Madam President, I'm bringing this to the board's attention, that I will be inviting Judge Delik to whatever meeting she'll be able to attend, and I'd ask her to present at that section, section Roman numeral eight, board recommendations presentations.
Does that mean she's available for us to get her on?
Yes, I will. Yes.
Yeah, not all, that's right. Just, as you know, making last minute arrangements of being in school. Tomorrow, we're going to have a convocation with all district teachers and administrators. And other district employees are invited, but administrators and teachers, it's mandatory that they attend. It's going to be at 8:30, beginning at 8:30 at East High School. And Mr. Jennings will be officially introduced, I guess, by Mr. Richards from the ADC. And he will, Mr. Jennings will give a presentation to the entire district staff about the vision, what he sees the future of the school district, et cetera, et cetera. So, of course, board members, you're welcome to attend if you can make it, at least for that part of it. And the next two days will then be professional development with building principals, building staffs during various activities, and that will continue on until Friday. They'll be in their own buildings. And Monday, the rest of the staff will report in their own buildings. And of course, Tuesday is the first day of school for all students. And so, I know a lot of the questions that you'll want to ask concerning enrollment, staffing. Say that at the next board meeting, I'll be glad to present any information you would want to have concerning those things. But then at least we'll have a real picture of where we're at, rather than guestimates or whatever. So, with that in mind, the, just to let you know that the administrative staff did spend all last week in administrative retreat at the Moni County Career Center, doing various professional development activities. And Mr. Jennings apologized for not being here tonight because he had another commitment. But his intent is to come to the board meetings, as he said. And any information that the board would request, anything provided to the ADC, his intent is to provide that also to the school board and establish, as he said, a working relationship with the board. So, that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Moranto?
If I could add, well, to the whole board. It might be a good idea if you would like Jen Merritt to present, would you like her to present at the same time as Judge Delik comes to the meeting, since you're not part of Jen Merritt's
That works. That's okay for me.
Moni County High School, okay?
That's okay for me.
All right, so, whatever you said, that I'll be glad to.
Okay, sure.
I'll talk to them about that.
Madam President, I do have, of course, I have questions. Oh, thank you. Ms. Moranto, you gave us a report on staff attendance at a previous meeting. And I, of course, am actually too through, excuse my use of that phrase, with the way this document was prepared and presented. I don't know who did that.
That came out of the payroll department.
Okay. Okay.
That's where I was told to get it from, so that's right there.
Okay. Well, there were two buildings not included in the report. Abbreviations were not defined. I had to kind of try to figure out what the heck they were talking about. And if these people were supposed to be using spreadsheets, this is nothing that I've ever been trained to prepare or to interpret. I got, and I did my own, tried to do my own analysis, and it was virtually impossible. I don't even know what the heck this stuff means. So, my concern is, still don't have, still don't have adequate information about staff attendance, at least in our buildings last school year. And without that information, I have to wonder, how are administrators, what are they using to make decisions about staff attendance? What information are they using to determine the excessive use of substitutes, which should be reflected in their budgets? But most importantly, what about the negative impact on student academic achievement? Is staff attendance even being tracked? If I hadn't asked for it, I have to wonder if it was even being tracked. And I'm asking that, in some way, shape, or form, if I, if you guys remember this, if you could pass that down, take a look at that. That, at least that was a little more clear, the way it was presented back when we had, Dr. O'Neill is our chair of admission. But this is, this is just not, the way that information is presented is not useful for anything. And of course, is that all staff, those numbers? Is that all staff, or is it just teachers? What we were given, was it all, was it just teachers?
Yeah, that was just teachers.
Okay. And of course, there's, some of those absences may be legitimate, because, you know, folks do get sick, have health issues, and our staff was getting up there in terms of age, and you know what happens to us as we age. We, all kinds of health issues start to surface. But there's no way to determine if these were, these absences were approved in advance. People are taking off for, you know, extended sick leave or what, okay? And so, so again, this kind of information, if we get it in the right format, would be, we should be using to determine the effective and efficient use of our tax dollars. I've asked, I don't know how many times, about the cost of substitutes last school year and the year before that, and if you have to get that. I know that's not your responsibility, Mr. Moranto, but I just.
If I could interject, we now, we now have a new, title is Chief of Human Capital.
I know, I read it.
Okay, thanks to the HR.
So, I think now, a lot of that information you're asking for, I'm going to ask him, and I'm sure he'll be able to provide that for us.
Okay, so are you telling me that each building is not keeping track of their own attendance information? That it has to be being tracked by the HR department?
No, they have, I mean, when somebody, we use the Aesop system, so in other words, when somebody is off, teacher, any, any after the employee, they have to go on Aesop. So, there's a record of that, yeah, for every building. And, I mean, as I told you, maybe I didn't tell you last time, but they could run a report showing, which is like this big, showing every time somebody's off, the name. I mean, we have it by name. We don't just have it by, you know. They thought that would be easier to look at, but if you, I mean, it's rather lengthy. It's like pages of pages. With all the names of anybody that's off every day they're off, and the reasons.
Okay, that information would be getting down in the weeds. What I'm looking for is trends. Okay, if this building has three math teachers off every week for two, three days, or that kind of general information, I don't need to know who these people are. That needs to be something that building administrators need to deal with, and eventually HR. Okay, but my concern is, this excessive use of sick leave. One of our buildings used, I guess I understood it correctly, 835 days total of sick leave. So, I know that had to be more than one, you know, that's more than one person, but, but, okay. So, what does that tell me overall about people not being regular in attendance, which every manager, any person's ever been a manager, has the right to demand that their folks be regular in attendance? But then what also does it tell us? That we're using substitutes that, if we can get them, and that costs us extra money, okay, because we got to pay the teacher's sick leave or whatever, and we got to pay the sub to come in at $120 or $150 a day. And it also tells me that because we're using subs, our regular teachers, our regular teachers, are not in the classroom teaching our children. So, duh, could that not have a negative impact on how poorly our children are performing on these state tests? Yes, I think so. And so, that's, you know, that's the overall reason, those are the overarching reasons for my wanting attendance information. Okay, now, what happens, you know, when you break it down, when you guys break it down, is another thing. But overall, I'd like to see what's going on with staff attendance and by building. And I don't care about their names, I don't care about their names, because at some point, at some point, those people should be called to, called to, called to order, if you will. And they need to be cautioned about not being regular in attendance. And progressive discipline needs to take place if you've got some repeaters, okay? People that are actually abusing it, our sick leave-ish policies, whatever the heck that is these days. So, that's what I'm talking about, Ms. Moranto. So, you know, needing names, addresses, and phone numbers, no, we don't need that. We don't need that. We just need, and if you see that, when I pass, we got that, you see what we got back. And that's pretty general, but what we got here, you guys got this crap. This was just absolutely outrageous. You guys, and you could pass that down, but you all got it. We got it. Joe gave it to us at a previous meeting. So, so.
So, are you asking for a report like this?
Yeah.
Okay. Once again, I'll pass it on to you. Well, that's why I do this.
Do I have to tell people, data, people that deal with data all the time, how to present information? Do I, as a board member, have to tell people that are supposed to be qualified and doing this stuff? Do I have to tell people how to prepare and present data?
Not.
Okay. Come on. Okay, and you were around when we got the, when we got those reports.
Yeah, and I, I asked for this, and I was told we didn't have anything like this now. This is what they had. Hey, I'm just telling you, don't shoot the messenger. Now that we have a new person in HR, I will speak to him and tell him what the board, the kind of information you're looking for, and I'm sure he'll be able to produce that, so.
Okay, okay.
I'll do that.
All right.
I'll bring it this.
Okay. Number two question. Recently, recently, we had a special ed employee from Cheney expressed her serious concerns about what she viewed as ongoing disservice being perpetrated on those students over there, special ed students over there. For example, special ed students not actively participating in gym classes. They were sitting on the bleachers while the other kids did whatever they do in gym classes. And I've been complaining about special ed, or, well, yeah, I'm not going to say services, because we don't service them, since 2015, things that I personally witnessed, and which I knew were in violation of state and federal laws. So, and to add insult to injury, I'm the person that called ODE, Office of Exceptional Children, and expressed my concerns. And that's what precipitated a state investigation into our special ed programs. And those people in ODE saw fit to release us from the corrective action plan. After three years, they released us sometime early this year. They said, yeah, you're a compliance, so we're going home. Well, we heard from that employee, was that last week or two weeks ago? And she's still saying the same dumb stuff about how we are not servicing these special ed children. So, I asked him, you know, I'm killing the messenger, Mr. Moranto. Has, has anything been done about her concerns? Have any of her concerns been addressed? And when and how will we know what corrections, if any, have been made before I call Columbus again?
I'll see if that's looked into.
So, you don't know it? Okay.
Well, obviously, nothing could occur over the summer, because we don't have kids or school, so.
No, 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 but the people responsible worked in, during the summer. The people that should have been correcting this special ed situation over the last three years have been working. Okay, so in terms of nobody being around or dragging them, no, I'm not buying that. I'm not buying that. Because those people should have been called to task and held accountable, and they needed to have straightened this crap out. I'm not, you know, we have almost a fourth of our student body is special ed. Almost 1,000 kids in Youngstown are special ed, okay? And found out, part of the problem we found, I found out, was that somehow we're being, we're predetermined to be special ed. They didn't even go bother, our people didn't even bother to do the necessary legal evaluations to determine whether those kids were special ed or not. We just had some folks, oh, no, you're special ed. You're going to special ed classes. So, no, I'm not, I'm not in a place, I'm not in a place to accept the fact, the school's not in session yet. Because the people responsible should have been, you said they had PD last week. They should have been PD and all dog on summer, based on this, on the information we got and I've been receiving over time. So, you know, I'm killing the messenger, Mr. Moranto. I'm killing the messenger.
I'll pass it on.
Okay. And then, this question has to do with the budget bill that was passed in the state legislature. And there was a lot in it about schools. And one thing that I, and I passed that out to you guys at the last meeting, I think. Let me see. There was one thing in there about changing graduation requirements.
Right.
Where are we with that?
Well, we still haven't received the official documents yet. Yeah, they've changed it a lot. And there's, actually, though, the change in graduation requirements does not kick in until this year's incoming freshmen will be seniors. By that, by that time, they will have a number of ways to receive that. And that statewide has nothing to do with Youngstown.
No, it is, I know.
So, as we get to that, we can pass it, but it really doesn't matter, because it won't take effect until four years. And who knows in four years what they'll do, so.
And then, right now, that.
So, right now, we go by what the current law.
Current law, yes, so we're just waiting until.
Yeah, although, we need to, you need to know that, what the future is, because this coming, incoming ninth graders need to be aware of, they're very soft, so.
Yes.
I'm sure once we, you know, Jackie, we have not even got yet the official budget from the state yet. I mean, you know, we've heard, based on your involvement, it would be, could be, we haven't got any official numbers, you know, official documents yet. So, once we get that, then I think the picture will become a little clearer, especially with graduation requirements. If there's anything we need to be implementing in our system to make sure that our students can avail themselves of these different opportunities to graduate. But right now, we haven't received anything yet officially.
Okay.
Just what you read and make.
Just what, okay. And then, remember, you gave a presentation a few months back about that new, I forget the name of it, flight? Whatever it was called, that was put in at East.
Ignite?
Ignite, yes, okay. Can we hear something, not today, but you know, next meeting maybe. Can we hear something about how that program progressed?
Okay.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this belongs, yeah, it does. Dress code, dress code.
Well, we have a new code of conduct. If you're, they're not calling it code of conduct. They're calling it code of excellence. But it's in draft form. It should be official. Well, obviously, it has to be official this week, because school's going back. So, I will, at the next meeting, provide you a copy of all that.
Okay. Or chart, because we got new people.
Yeah, and I'll tell Justin, I mean, that's his area, and he said he's working on that.
Okay, now, dress code, Joe, you didn't let me finish.
I'm sorry.
Not, it wasn't about the students, but you've heard, you know, heard me about that. My concern is about the teaching staff. And what I saw a few months back on television, one of our teachers had a nose ring, had rainbow colored hair. And she had a short sleeve shirt. She was tatted up one side and down the other. What message are we sending to our young people? They can't go to no job interview looking like that. And so, and I told, I've mentioned to you guys before about teachers that I've seen come to school in high-top Converses. Remember those kind of those of you in my age group? The high-top Converses with the white sole and the black cloth, whatever, you know, those robes? She came to work in those and some pedal, what we call pedal pushers, folks. You guys call, you younger people call it something else.
Capris.
Who said capris?
You would add all that.
Okay, I'm like, okay, really? Really? Come on now. We're having a hard enough time, as African Americans especially, to present ourselves like we should. But when you have teachers that are presenting themselves like, where do you think you going? You can do that after work. You don't come to work with no ring in your nose. You don't come to work with your rainbow colored hair, okay? You don't do that, because our children need to see the proper way to present themselves. So, that was my concern, Joe. What has happened to proper decorum? What has happened to professional-looking people? I've taught in a classroom. I never came to work looking like that. Never. Okay, so that was my concern about dress, about dress code, not the students. It was about the staff.
And I will just tell you this.
Okay.
That, the teacher dress code is part of the collective bargaining agreement between the teachers' union and, of course, the administration. Currently, our teachers' contract is actually expired almost two years ago now.
Yeah, it is.
And with all the, to be honest, just the confusion in the last few months especially, no negotiating sessions have taken place. I'm assuming now that we have a new CEO in place, and I don't know who he will be using as his legal, legal firm, you know? But all to ask be determined, and then I'm sure he intends to get those negotiations going. To be honest, surprised the teachers' union hasn't pushed a little more for that. But to, to cut to the chase, the teacher's dress code is part of the bargaining agreement?
That's not in the dress code, Joe, though, come on.
Well, yeah, it is.
Nose rings, rainbow hair?
Yeah, yeah, Jackie, if you don't specifically say you can't do something, then it means you can't. So I'm just saying, if it's, if the board, I hear what you're saying, then we can pass that on to our, our collective bargaining team, the management side, and then raise those issues in negotiations.
Has that, has, has that been challenged? The way the teachers are allowed to come, come to work looking like whatever?
It's a bylaws, no.
So no administrator said, no, no, come here, you can't wear that.
Well, it, once again, they go by what the, what the contract says.
Okay, yeah.
So if that's something that we think is an issue, then we need to...
You don't think that's an issue?
Now, you're asking for my personal opinion.
Yeah, I am.
No, I, I think we need to dress professionally, and we need to be a good role model example to our students. Yes, I agree, I agree with that.
Okay, I never saw you wear a nose ring to them, that's all.
No, you won't either.
That's all, okay. And I, and I think this is my last one, Madam President. Oh, curriculum, I'm still hearing from people at Chaney who are talking about Math III. And again, I asked a while back, what the heck is Math III? What is that? Just like I asked you about, what is advanced PE? Our curriculum is really tore up from the floor up. What the hell are those, excuse my French, what are those subjects? What are those subjects? And why are we dumbing down our children, offering those kinds of off the wall courses?
And can I, I'm gonna just respond myself.
Oh, yeah, please.
All these things that you've said, my, here's what I wanted to bring up to Mr. Jennings, and maybe, maybe the, we may see a change here, that maybe he would invite people from the curriculum department to come, special ed department, to, you know? Then you can address them with your concerns, and maybe they can give you a response. And maybe that will sort of do. But let's hope for a new dialogue where there is actual dialogue between the board and our administrative leadership. But that would be, of course, the CEO's at all.
Yes.
But I will talk to him about that and recommend.
But in, in terms of...
That might, that might, you know, maybe get to the bottom of something, maybe we'll see that, you know, those things can be answered in a better way, more suitable to...
But let me just throw this at you. In terms of curriculum, unless Mohev changed the policy, which he was allowed to modify board policy, unless he modified the curriculum policy, the community was supposed to have input in what courses, what curriculum for Youngstown schools was supposed to entail. So just, just to throw that at you, that is in, that is in HB 70. He can modify curriculum. If he has not modified that particular part of our policy, I mean, he can modify policy, I'm sorry, he can modify policy. If he has not done that, then there better be some community input when, when these folks come up with this crazy stuff.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. And then, then my last one, my last one is inventory. And I've asked about this before. We don't have, this, have we decided to get an inventory control policy? Because I'm hearing about equipment just walking out of buildings and people taking stuff, employees taking stuff home, never to be seen again. And we got dinged, we got dinged in the audit about inventory control, the state audit, and so, so do you have a response to that?
No, I'll look into it.
Okay, that's it, Madam President, thank you.
As the record show, that Mr. Hunter came into meeting at 4:42, and Mr. Murphy at 5:01. I, I had a question, some things from what Jackie just said. So the graduation, the ways to graduate will stay as they have been for the last one or two years, the ten ways to graduate, that stays in place?
Uh huh.
Okay.
What was that, Madam President?
You know, they, they created like ten different ways you can graduate. I guess, what I'm saying is that will stay in place until this new...
New thing, okay.
...thing comes up. And as far as dress code, so there won't be uniforms, right?
No.
Okay. And then...
Not this year.
Okay. I, I have one concern if a teacher's walking around with rainbow hair, because I know of at least three occasions where students were denied to be on the volleyball team grounds because they had colored hair. So how in the world can you deny a student if the teachers are walking around with rainbow colored hair? Now, I didn't see this teacher, so...
It was on TV.
Yeah.
She says left the district, though.
Oh, she didn't, okay.
I mean, not that that matters, but not because...
She needed to. And then, who was our new in charge in red? Do you have a name for that?
Yeah, Thomas Gill.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Moranto, I want to know...
I can't hear you.
The warehouse, as far as the books are, the last time I talked to a couple administrators as far as the warehouse, there were thousands of books, branded books, that wasn't being utilized. And teachers were still in need of books. And with, from my understanding, Mr. Murphy was contacted concerning the books that were in the warehouse, or wasn't distributed. Do you know if all of our classrooms have new, up to date, as far as like equipment, and also too, what their books, they're running need for the beginning of the school year?
I'm gonna say yeah, but I double check them.
Okay, that would be great.
Any other questions for the superintendent? That would board members comments, five minutes, Mr. Murphy?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Bechavich?
I will not be commenting tonight. I'll make a comment after the next financial committee meeting.
When is that meeting?
That meeting is scheduled for August the 27th. And that's the same night as our school board meeting.
Oh, okay. What time is your meeting?
It's supposed to be at 4:00 PM.
Where is that, on the south end?
East.
The library?
Um, no, probably in...
The vault?
The vault.
We'll be back on regularly, I remember. The school will be back.
And the next meeting should be...
Next meeting should be back in five hours.
Five hours, people will be in five hours, in our phone hours. Okay. Could I say dear?
I don't have much to, much to offer, other than, you know, my concerns about our finance situation and all the negative PR that was presented, presented in the vindicator about the fact that the board, we bumbled the levy issue. And, well, I know, but that's what he wrote, okay? And, and without, and without having a fair and balanced newspaper, of course, only one side of the story got presented, and that was, we bumbled that, we had, you know, we waited till the last minute, and on, and on, and on, to try to get that taken care of, blah, blah, blah. So, you know, so other than that, all the negatives that have been written in that paper, and I did send some of you my responses to some of the negative stuff that one of those editorial staff, several of those editorial writings slammed us for stuff that didn't belong to us, they belonged to the CEO, the former CEO. And so I did write, I have written, but not, not letters to the editor, about their one-sided presentation of what goes on at Youngstown City School, Schools, and at our board meetings. I even said, well, none of you have ever been to a meeting, so how you know what we say, okay? The one person especially has never been here, okay? And some of their reporters have, and, and then even after they've come, they still twisted in turn what happens in our board meetings. So I am, I'm very much concerned. We did vote to change our, where we have our, our information about board meetings presented in the print media. We, we voted, what, two meetings ago or something like that, I don't know. To use the Warren Tribune and the Business Journal, and I can hardly wait. I don't know when that's gonna take place, but I can hardly wait because I've just, I've had about enough of that vindicator and their unfair and unbalanced reporting about what goes on in our district, what goes on with the board, okay? And somehow, like I said, we're, you know, if we step on a crack, they make a big deal out of it, but somehow or another, the previous administration was this next best thing since ice cream. And I did also send, send you guys, I think I did, an article, an article that appeared in the Colorado paper, that I felt very much, very explicitly, they got it right. The writer of that article got it right about what happened, what has happened here in Youngstown, over the, the Youngstown schools over the last three years or so, under state control, being led here locally by former CEO Krish Mohi. So, we, you know, we do have, we do need to talk about our finances, and I'm pleased to understand, I'm pleased to know, because I was kind of confused, what was the hurry about that levy? But I'm pleased to now understand that we are not, there, there was no need to rush that, because that money won't dry up until 2021. The $5 million plus dollars that our tax, property taxes generate won't dry up until 2021. So we have plenty of time, fellow board members, to take a long, hard look, and an analytical look at our finances, and, and so we can determine whether or not, you know, what, what, why do we need, what's the reason for the levies staying on the, on the, on the books? Nobody has, nobody has told us, be it Mr. Genetti, or the previous CEO, and, and or the current CEO, why do they need this money? And if it's, if it's to pay in for these hundred thousand dollar people, I don't think so. And if you, if you guys read the last article, I think it was the last article that Mr. Meacham, that he put in the paper, and he put some charts, he put a spreadsheet in the, in the paper a few days ago, that showed our, the city's median income has dropped from what I thought it was, I've been saying over time, I've been telling everybody it was $24,000, but according to Mr. Meacham, it's now $20,000. $20,000 is our, our district's median income. But yet, can we afford to be paying folks hundreds of thousands of dollars? And so, we do have to have, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not going to approve putting a levy on the ballot until, and that's a big until, and unless we get some definitive documentation as to why we need, need that money. Am I five minutes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for the issue they raised, particularly Ms. Adair. The issues that she's raised go the hard of what our job as a school board member, and that takes a little bit of the time that we otherwise have to spend discussing all of the many problems this district faces. But I will raise some issues she hasn't raised. I do feel that even though the Vindys coverage of the levy vote was definitely one-sided and relatively fact-free, especially since no one was here covering that vote from the vindicator, I do also feel that if the board felt it needed to make a decision in time to be on the ballot by the recent deadline, meetings should have been held in organized and staggered fashion well in advance, and we were aware of the need to do so, so we had months to make that happen. It's been a rather haphazard pattern of dealing with meetings and the board's business lately, this has been over the course of a number of months, and it's very problematic. It's not a good look, it's not professional on the board's part, and a lot of it is occasioned by decisions made unfortunately by board leadership. Board leadership decides that this meeting's gonna be canceled, this meeting's gonna be moved, and frankly, that's something that doesn't bode well for not just getting business done on the part of the board, but for full participation. And there's members of this board that work and have very tight schedules, have had conversations with other members of the board about that. So I think we really need to do some soul searching as a group and work more collaboratively as a team, to make sure we're all on board with an organized strategy for dealing with the issues that this board has to tackle. I don't see that happening, including the most recent agenda review, it somehow felt, and I don't understand why that was the case, that should have worked out. Now, I want to bring up a bigger issue. I want to bring up the issue of 400 years of slavery and discrimination, and Jim Crow, and the anniversary of that in this country, and the fact that we sit on a board that represents a city that has been massively disenfranchised in one of the most elemental, basic services the government provides, which is education. And I want to bring up a quote, a very, very well-known quote that I think is relevant here. People will never give you the education you need to overthrow them. Our district has been systematically missed and undereducated, and it's a part of the pattern of abuses that have taken place in this country over 400 years, this overwhelmingly African-American district. And these contractors that come in over this state takeover have been monetizing our children's failure for a very, very long time. Now, we have a new CEO, we're in this very interesting moment in time, and my approach has always been to follow that quote from Frederick Douglass. I will unite with anyone to do right, no one to do wrong. So I'm going to talk to him, and I'm gonna hope to work with him for the benefit of our children. At the same time, we know what this regime is about, we know what it has to offer, and I'm going to remain vigilant on behalf of the people that elected me to serve on this board and serve their best interest. And that brings me to the issue of this boarding school that's proposed. Multiple members of this board have spoken out against this. It's basically shortening the school-to-prison pipeline, they want to cut out the middleman and bring the prison right to the school. It's basically just another way to monetize and make profit off our children, and they did not consult the community, they did not consult the neighborhood, it's supposed to go on, they didn't consult anybody on this board, the people who were elected to represent this city in educational affairs. They had a whole backdoor cabal, the same way they did with the Youngstown plan, and then they want to come out of those backroom conversations and say that they're serving the best interest of the public and our children. You want to serve the best interest of the public and our children, you give the public, the community, parents, taxpayers, and those children a say over the future educationally of this city. They deserve no less. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Shad?
Thank you. I just want to make the comment about something that Mr. Hunter mentioned about the meetings and there being some issues with their, with sketching and stuff like that over the last couple of months. Over the last couple of months, myself, the president, Ms. Sabechavich, have been going back and forth to Columbus to fight for our district, to overturn HB 70. And a lot of those meetings that they were setting up down in Columbus, they weren't giving us any, any notice or any time in, in advance to say this is gonna happen. They wanted to, they wanted to make these hearings happen as quickly as possible without any response from our community. And the, the piece I would want people to take away from this is that this fight is not over as far as the issue of HB 70. And even though the state senate couldn't make a bid to find to carry through with everyone believes is a bad plan HB 70, the fight is still on there, we still have a lawsuit, we still need to be going back to Columbus and making these, the senate, these state senators, all legislators, all the legislators in Columbus, know that we're not gonna back down because of this, of their, of them not wanting to take action. So, yeah, I will admit, it was, it was tough, it was a lot of this disruption to our regular patterns of our meetings, but it was necessary to have that disruption in order for us to have a voice down in Columbus. And from that, from our, from, from us talking and being activated on this particular issue, there's a lot of other issues that, that still are, that are still taking place under HB 70. How it is, to me, is an unfair labor practice that our, that our, our union is going without having a contract, and that, and that's crazy. I don't even know how, how that happens. The, the other issue is that... The, the other issue is that, you know, if you don't have a contract, we're lucky these people haven't struck, shouldn't have a strike yet, you know? And they, and they need to be at the table correcting this situation here. As far as where our schools, uh, system, the, the, it sounds like Mr. Moranto wants to give us some reports and things like that. More or less, what I would like to see Mr. Moranto is that Mr. Jennings had gave us a report early on about the, the ninety-three point five vacancies that we had in the district. And I would like to know, have those vacancies been filled? Would, how many vacancies remain? What is the structure of our, of our district, of our district buildings for the upcoming school year? You know, and are, and are those positions being filled? And, um, the, the, the funding with the state. The issue with this, with Ohio is that it's been deemed unconstitutional how schools are funded. That's been over twenty years that that decision has been made by the state Supreme Court, but they have yet to change it. You know, these are the things we need to get mobilized and start talking to Columbus about. If the state, if the state, if the state, uh, has said that it's un, if the state, uh, Supreme Court has said it's unconstitutional how, how the funding is happening in the state, why isn't everybody up in arms? How did that conversation die after twenty years of being viewed as something that was unjust and unconstitutional in Ohio? And why isn't every newspaper talking about that every day until that's changed? So, I mean, it's important that we do get a levy on, 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 on the books, and my, my, I thought the urgency was there just because we don't know what the next structural report is gonna look like, and if those people are gonna view it as essential that that levy be on the ballot. However, I will say, for myself, I was, I was ill, and I did what I could do. I mean, hey, I, I fought the fight, and it was to the point where my family was like, hey, you need to go to the hospital. You know, because the levy can be placed on the ballot another day. And so I, I made that personal decision for my well-being and health, and my family's peace of mind. But I will say that there is a lot of restructuring and shaping that needs to take place in this district to ensure that whatever funding comes in here is used appropriately, and an increase in spending is spent in the classroom. That's all.
Ms. Edson?
Yes. Um, I just wanted to address as far as like, um, the meetings as well too. I know a couple of our board members have touched on it, but, um, I would like for us to really think about being organized and being considered of all board members, whether they're on vacation or whether they work. I know I personally changed my schedule at work so I can be off every Tuesday for our meetings, and I know that we had to go down to Columbus to fight, but I know like three meetings in a row right after I was able to get my job to change my schedule, were ended up being canceled when we still could have had a forum to conduct the regular, um, business. So as far as like with the levy, we should have been discussing this a long time ago. It's got pushed back, got pushed back. I know, to be honest with you, Ralph Meacham understands our finances more than our own treasurer. And he had an opportunity, he came to our community meeting that I held at St. Augustine's, and he gave a breakdown of our money, where is it being spent, and the outlook. And that could have been explained to us of, you know, it does not necessarily have to be done now. But it does look bad. A lot of the people that's not here at the meetings, they don't know, they're not privy to the, um, understanding why, but it does look bad when we have three back-to-back special meetings just on a resolution for a levy. So I, I would appreciate it, you know, if we work together in terms of scheduling, so the public is able to be there, because most people, they work nine to five. Um, in addition to that, even when it comes to our board meetings and the agenda, you know, for the agenda review, is that we work with everyone's schedule, so we can have something actually on the agenda, because we have, there's other ideas that need to be shared from all board members, and it's not being placed on here because it's not convenient for everyone. So I'll work with you, um, Saturdays, Sundays, I don't care if there's a special meeting on those days, it's just, I can't do special meetings during workouts. Thank you.
First of all, I wanna say for every vote that was canceled, we did not have a forum, and that's why it had to be canceled. Okay? Yeah, we did not have a forum, and that's why it was canceled.
Four of us couldn't be there?
Four of us couldn't be there. That's why it was canceled. Now, if you wanna go back and look up the dates and ask questions, you can walk up to do that, but we did not have a forum is why they were canceled. Secondly, the meetings are at five thirty in the fall, and four thirty through the summer, and that's what we voted on. So that's where it is as far as agenda review. Asked Mr. A.J. Jennings to send out a list because he's supposed to be doing the work for the board, and so he said he would get a list sent out, but usually agenda review is at five or earlier. But if people, what, the folks that are attending would like it to be earlier and they're able to come to those meetings. I just wanted to say, my concern is, I don't know if this is, uh, my concern is, uh, it's just been weighing heavy on my mind is the fact that the ADC Commission says that they want to work with the board. Because I don't think people understand how House Bill seventy and how severe it is, and that it can eventually lead, lead to chartering out our whole school district, and the mayor selecting five members that are given to him, um, out of ten people, from the state school superintendent who selects a committee to choose those names. Uh, because while we were there testifying, Marie Hoffmaster from the Academic Distress Commission testified two times, I would say against this board, to keep House Bill seventy in place because she felt it was working, and there was a lot of groundwork that had been laid that she didn't want us to lose this school year with these changes. We had our CEO, Mr. Jennings, write a, um, um, a letter saying that this is working so it should stay in place. Okay? And I don't think that they understand, again, that they went down to Columbus, or he didn't go, he wrote a letter, Mr. Jennings. But when they said these things, I don't think they, they truly understand how House Bill seventy, I think that everybody has their own personal reasons for wanting this in place. Because you not only deal with Youngstown City Schools and public education, this affects public education all over the total state of Ohio, that our district could possibly be chartered out because of this. Now, Ms. Hoffmaster wants us to work with her and this ADC, but I don't know what groundwork was laid out because the board was never given any information on this groundwork that was laid out that she didn't wanna lose. But what happens if this doesn't work? Because under Mr. Mohe, clearly we have went backwards. Because she went up there and testified, and I think they took her testimony very seriously because she's part of the ADC, that this should stay in place, we could lose our total district. And I just think they're unaware of how dangerous this law is. And with the CEO, and I have nothing personal against him, I don't know him, and he didn't know what was going on in our district, and I don't know if he clearly understood House Bill seventy, to say that it was working because he hadn't been here in the district to understand or to know what was going on. Uh, so I just don't understand how these folks want us to work with them, because if there was groundwork that was actually laid, that groundwork could have stayed in place without this complete and total control over our district, pulling away the authority of the elected board members. So that's kind of upsetting to me, and I wanted to say about the levy, the levy was discussed for about a year and a half. We didn't come down to meetings and resolutions until this last couple of weeks, but the levy, we've been discussing that when we were over at Schoeffel Career Center having meetings. So it wasn't something that was not discussed, and then it was pushed. And I just, you know, I just hope that we can all work together for what's best for our children, because already, and I'll say over and over, we've lost so much ground under the leadership of Mr. Mohe who's walked away, and I guess he's doing whatever he wants to do, but we're, we're left stuck, and hopefully, we can work together and pull our children out of this situation that they've been placed in, um, under this leadership with a, a lack of funds, because we know that almost thirteen million dollars or more or less was spent in the classroom. There was that eleven million dollars that I don't know if ever was accounted for.
No, okay, that wasn't spent.
Right, I said less.
Oh, less.
Less spent in the classroom. So I, I just want what's best for our children, I don't know how that's gonna happen. I guess we'll just need to work together and see. Hopefully, we can get some reports, some of the administrators coming in to give us some reports. Mr. Moranto, I think you mentioned that.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Jennings to do that.
Right, so that we are aware of what's happening. This is our school district. Regardless of how long we have to sit here, because we don't know what's gonna happen in twenty with this board, we have to remember there was a one-year moratorium placed, uh, but that's for school districts that are not in academic distress. We have to know East Cleveland is in distress with only one failing school, but they just fell in, so they have time, and Lorraine has more time than we have. So what appears to me is if this continues, Youngstown City School District is the only district that will be caught into this net and could possibly be chartered out, and I think that's what they wanted from the beginning, and I believe that's why House Bill one sixty-six was pulled, and they said that they will work on it, and, um, it's just, just bad. So for Ms. Hoffmaster, she went down there twice, I don't appreciate it, and testified against this district, I don't know where Ms. Hoffmaster lives, I don't know if she's ever had children in the district or went to the district. I'm not gonna, I don't know her knowledge about the district, but I know that House Bill seventy is not the best thing for this district, and I just wish she hadn't testified to say that it should stay in place, because again, that groundwork, whatever it was that was laid, again, if this board has no knowledge of, because we're not given information, could have stayed in place, I'm sure, without House Bill seventy staying in place. Thank you.
Madam President. Since you mentioned, um, the, I was gonna bring this, this up under unfinished business, and if you want me to wait out for that point, but you talked about collaborating or not with ADC in your, in your presentation, and, um, if, you know, I'd like to comment here that, you know, everything you say is true. She's looking at what she thinks is the best idea for what she knows. Mr. Jennings is looking, I'm thinking, I'm looking at him as, this is a personal thing, because he's, he's gonna be making about two hundred thousand dollars a year if, as long as HB seventy is uncontrollable. And so there's some very personal reasons, I believe, that they, you know, that they did what they did, but the fact still remains is that until and unless HB seventy is thrown out, we have what we have, and that's the commission. And if they want to know, and I've said this before, if they want to collaborate and talk with us through either the commission itself or, or even through Mr. Jennings, I am perfectly willing to do, to, to do that. We can't keep doing what we, and we can't keep doing what we did with Mohe, nothing, okay? Uh, and we can't keep waiting on Mr. Moranto to go run back and ask, well, what about this and what about that? Not getting any answers to anything. Because we have not, you know, I don't know about you, but I've not been able to make an informed decision or make, tell my community anything, give them any factual information about what has gone on in this district. Because we've not gotten any information, and Mr. Mohe has saw to it that we didn't. And so if this is the only way that we're gonna be able to help them, the commission and Mr. Jennings, get us out of this, this bad situation that we find ourselves in, thank you, Mr. Mohe, then I am all for collaborating with them. Thank you.
Okay, you know what, and that's fine, I don't have any problem with that either, but I'm gonna say this, that same commission that sits there now saying they wanna collaborate was the same commission that sat there when they could have stopped Mr. Mohe from, from some, from some of the damage that he did to this district, and they refused to do it because they said that they didn't have the power to release him, although the law says he works at the pleasure of the commission, I think is on the next to the last page of that law. So they could have released him, but instead, what did they say? We went to him, them, oh, we can't tell him who to hire, or we can't tell, we know that this isn't right, but we can't tell him that, you know, what to do, or we can't stop him from doing that. You could even sit down and advise him, hey, you're working for us, this doesn't look right to us, you need to make some changes, or something has to happen. None of that happened. They allowed this to roll on, and then I, I was thinking about it just now, I remember he testified, and he said, this is Mr. Mohe, about May twenty-ninth, and he made the comment that he and the CEO from Lorraine didn't have to be in these areas, they could go anywhere across this country and get a job. And I was just thinking, does he think people does not read the paper? Because you've been all over the country and you couldn't get a job. So, that's all.
And, and, Madam President, um, again, you know, I know, and I, you probably do too, that the, the original commission that hired Mohe did have issues with him, but they took their concerns to where the power lies, and that's with the state superintendent, Paulo de Maria. And Paulo is the person who said, oh, no, you don't. And so as a result of that, remember, three of those people quit, yes. So, you know, and I'm just throwing that out there.
That's true.
And, and of course, I've also been told that Mr. Mohe was not one that, the, the following commission, the one I guess that's seated now, um, no, no, the Benioe Commission. They could, he just wasn't here. Whatever they tried to say and advise him of, he was not here, and he was doing his way. And so you see what we got. So I'm, you know, I'm just saying that, okay, I know all of what you said, I know, and I've heard from other board members as well about, about how they feel about commissions, and, hey, I've felt about commissions since they first came in the district in twenty-ten, okay? But it is what it is, folks, and we can, you know, we can't keep bumping our heads up against the wall, and you, you've heard me say this, you keep doing the same thing over and over and expect a different result. My opinion is not insanity, it's stupid, okay? So we have to, this is, this is an opening, this is an opening, and if, if we can work with them, the commission and Mr. Jennings, this school year, we may be able to pull our fat out of the fire. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm hoping that we may be able to help that commission do what there's, those experts are supposed to do, and that's to bring our academic condition here in this, in this school district from a failure to at least a D or a C. Okay? Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, are we on unfinished business now?
Unfinished business.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that the board commit to meeting, having joint meetings with the ADC as special meetings once a month. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I guess we're in discussion? Correct, Madam President?
Discussion.
Are we in discussion?
In discussion.
Okay, Madam President, if I may, let's explain my motion. We had Dr. Hoffmaster here discussing this issue of meeting with the board on a regular basis. Her idea, she presented it, was us sharing our meetings every meeting. I don't agree with that, we have to have our own meetings and conduct our own business. I agree, however, with the spirit that was expressed and what Ms. Adair expressed. We have some definite differences with the ADC. We definitely have some disagreement with how the ADC came into existence. I have expressed that on numerous occasions. However, I think we should talk with them. And I think sometimes the people you have disagreements with are the first people you want to talk to. We need to have regular communication, we need to have regular sharing of information. And personally, I think the best way to do that is through special meetings on a regular basis. And hopefully, by gaining information and connecting with the ADC through those meetings, that will help fuel the business we do in our regular meetings from month to month. So that's the spirit in which this motion has been proposed. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other discussion?
I like the motion that we table that until, um, we don't, we don't know what the schedule is for a commission, we don't know when they're gonna meet, and I would like to know more about what reports they're gonna offer, or be given from the CEO before we talk about a joint meeting, because my, my thoughts are, first of all, what is the role of the, of the Academic Distress Commission? It's to hire, fire, and they do one evaluation if they do that. So I wanna know more about when they're gonna, when they're gonna meet, what information they're gonna get at their meetings, and then what we can, what we can ascertain. and then what we can, what we can ascertain will be the best direction to go once that information has been given to us.
I'd like to know the framework of the meeting. Who's gonna run the meeting? Is it gonna be our meeting? Is it gonna be their meeting? Is it a joint meeting? Who's gonna keep the minutes? Who's gonna run the meetings? Who's gonna bring us the information? So we're not just guaranteed we're gonna meet once a month and know nothing about it.
Madam President, if I may, couple of points. Nothing in the motion specified a specific time. It was a commitment to the idea of meeting once a month, whenever that date might be upon mutual agreement. When Dr. Hoffmaster was here, she actually specified that she would like to see something from the board, some kind of step indicating a role more than the idea of having those collaborative meetings. That would be what this is. And as to this...
There's a point of order, because there's a motion to table this, your, your motion.
We need a second on that. Mr. Murphy went straight into discussion.
Yeah, I understand that, but we, but there's a motion. And you recognize that, so we need a, I would ask that, is there a second to table it?
Okay, so if I may, Madam President.
So therefore, it's tabled, there's no discussion.
No, there's no vote. The next thing is to discuss. The next thing is to discuss. Your motion's not on the table.
It's been tabled.
No.
No.
You gotta vote on it.
We're in a discussion period. You motioned, he said, we're not in discussion.
Second, this discussion on your motion.
There's no, there's no debate about a, about a table motion.
Yes.
Find it and show me, right?
I forgot.
Let me, let me see if I can find it. And I think that, that motion was out of order.
Give me one second.
I'll say one.
Kimble.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Adair.
No.
Sivikovich.
Yes.
Hunter.
No.
Sanderson.
No.
Shad, yes. The motion, the motion to table this, to table the motion passes four to three. Madam President, if I may, I would like to move to take it from the table. Do I get a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Thank you. This is an issue, this is an issue that unfortunately has been tabled already. We had a meeting when we discussed this, and we said, "We're gonna have a discussion, and we'll decide upon it on a future date." This is a future date. How many times are we gonna table this? How many times are we gonna drop the ball in terms of having communication with those who are actually in power, unfortunately, over the education of our children? Now, I don't agree with what they're doing. I don't agree with the system that put them in place. But for us to just stick our head in the sand and then at the same time say we're not giving information is absolutely ludicrous and ridiculous. Now, they want to talk with us. The whole regime that put them in place is bogus. But the information behind what they're doing is important to us. Because this board has been making decisions in the dark for too long and then wondering why it's in the dark. We should be meeting, we should be discussing, we should put the chip on our shoulder side for as long as it takes to actually collect some information to do good, to do right by the children of this district. And some of the people on this board just need to get over themselves. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, Mrs. Sanderson.
I think us, we're supposed to represent the public, and it's not about our hurt feelings. We need to be getting the information. We need to be working with them. I want, when this transition take place, when them to pass that torch back over, we be well informed. We need to look at what the public wants. I have spoken to people in the community. They want us to work with the commission. They want us to work with the CEO. And what it seems like is that we're making it personal instead of it being about, about the children or what the community wants and trying to see what the future relies. I don't see the problem, I don't see the harm that we caused. This is just a draft of what will be, look, they'll look like as far as a schedule. As far as like the details being worked out, we can always do that because we, you know, we do have work sessions. So there's no problem with us just passing it to, say, in the future, we would like to meet with you monthly to, to talk. I don't see the harm.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Jennings told me that he'll give us all the information we want.
He told us, he told you.
He told me that, yeah.
He told you.
He told me.
But he's come before us and tell us.
When we met with the ADC, yes. When we met with them out there, he pulled me aside and said, "He'll give us all the information and make sure we get all the information we want." So we gotta give him a chance to do that.
Okay, so how's this not giving him a chance? How is that not giving him a chance?
It's not. We gotta give him a chance. That's what I'm, I want him to bring us the information.
Oh, we don't wanna get it from the commission.
I wanna get it from him. I said he do that. So I want him to let everyone come in and give us the information.
Madam President, excuse me, Fred Rutten. However, this is, we've been going back and forth about these commissions for quite, quite a number of years. And as I've stated over and over, and many other people on the board have stated over and over, at one point, they refused to tell us anything. That Benioe Commission refused to tell us, even refused to meet with us. Based on what you've shared with us, Madam President, you asked him, and he said, "No". And so now, now we have a foot in the door, we have an opening. And I, you know, I have to agree with Ms. Sanderson. This is not personal. This should not be about hurt feelings and Hoffmaster wouldn't state in her case and blah, blah, blah. What did you expect her to say? And, and again, what did you expect Mr. Jennings to say? He's gonna make $200,000 here. So why would he say, "No, no, no, do away with HB 70"? Because it's common sense. But right now, it is what it is, and we have to be the bigger persons. And all the details that everybody's asking about, we can work on that. But right now, it's just the issue of agreeing to meet and collaborate with them. And then we can get together and work out the details. Who's on first? Who's gonna chair the meeting? Who's gonna blah, blah, blah? We can do that. We can do that, okay? But not, but right now, it's just a matter of do we, should we or should we not meet and collaborate with the commission? Should we or should we not? As a matter of fact, folks, when did, with previous commissions, did any of them come to our meetings? We've had Nick here a couple times. Ms. Hoffmaster came a couple times. Even Mr. Jennings would be here today, but he's got another commitment. Moheb blew us off and told us to go fly a hike. We hadn't seen him in two years or better, okay? So I, you know, this is not about me. It is not about me. I hope it ain't about any of you guys. This is about what's best for the children in this school district. And we have not had any authority, we have not had an impact on anything that's taken place in our district since, what was that, 2016, when Moheb stepped foot, set foot on, on the premises. So this is an opportunity. They need to hear from those of us who live in this city. I've got children in my neighborhood who go to Youngstown schools. I'm sure some of you do too. I've got people that, that are telling me, "Heck, no, I'm not bringing my, I'm not enrolling my kids in Youngstown City Schools." Why? Okay. So we have to do something to recoup those students we have lost. We have to do something to improve the academic condition of the children in this city. And until and unless we do, and we don't have the authority to say or do anything about it, until and unless we do, Youngstown City is gonna go down the tubes, okay? Youngstown City is on the verge of financial crisis, it's doggone self. Well, what is that about? Because we don't have enough people living in this city working. And working people need to be educated people. That's our responsibility. And whatever we have to do, just shy of doing something illegal, we need to do it, folks. And that, in my opinion, means collaborating with, with the Academic Distress Commission. Thank you, Madam President.
To the President.
Mr. Shad.
No one's saying that we don't, we do not wanna collaborate with the commission. No one is talking about her feelings, because, I mean, the issue is this, is that CEO Jennings said that he would meet with us. From my understanding, the commission is only gonna be, supposed to be meeting like once every other month. So my thoughts are, until we can get a grasp from him about when he's gonna meet with us and what that meeting's gonna look like, why would we trouble the commission if we're working directly with the CEO? That, that's, that's, that's the piece there. And the, and the commission is only gonna meet once a month, how, once every other month? How can they directly answer or, or answer questions that we may have when they may be a month behind us? So if the, if the CEO himself said that he is gonna work with us, then let's work on the structure of working directly with the CEO.
Madam President, if I may, what you're gonna effect telling the public is that we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. That you can't meet with the CEO and get information from the CEO, and also meet with the ADC. Which, by the way, Ms. Hoffmaster came here, and Dr. Hoffmaster came here and said, "We would like to collaborate with you with each of your meetings". So this is dialed down from what you came here and said. So the schedule that you put out, Mr. Shad, with all due respect, doesn't match with what you came and presented. We can walk and chew gum at the same time, and if you can't, then you really shouldn't be on this board if you can't take information from this source and that source and the other source and make reasonable decisions for the future of our children. We are talking right now about taking this off the table. We're not even just discussing a straight vote on it. And to me, the fact that we have to find ourselves in discussion over whether we are actually going to vote on this illustrates the ultimate dysfunction behind this board. It's cowardly. You should at least decide that you're going to make a decision. And this is something that comes right on the heels of the ridiculousness of the lead-up to that levy vote, where we could've made a decision months before, but we're making a decision an hour before the deadline with the Board of Elections. All this is a bad look to the community where we're trying to make the argument that the board should have the power to make decisions on the educational future of our children. Well, if you believe that, act like it. So vote for this motion to take this off the table and make a straight decision and stand by that decision. So the public that elected you knows where you stand on collaborating with, getting information from, and making reasoned, well-reasoned decisions for the future of our children. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President.
All right, Ms. Adair.
So the ADC's next meeting is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. They're going to be meeting at the Chauvin Career Center. I unfortunately will not be able to attend that meeting. I will be in Columbus. I then have a meeting with the Finance Committee later on this month. I too feel as though Mr. Jennings needs to be given the opportunity to follow through on what he has promised to multiple members of this board, that he is going to be bringing us the information, he is going to be attending these meetings, he is going to make sure that we are informed. Let's give him the chance to do what he said he was gonna do before we go and start meeting with the ADC. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm gonna call, roll call. You wanna state your motion, Mr. Murphy?
The motion is to lay back on the table. The original motion that was tabled, and that original motion was for us to have joint meetings with the ADC as special meetings once a month. So you will be voting to lay that back on the table so that we can then actually vote on it. That's how ridiculous this has all gotten. That's where we're at.
It's not ridiculous. I just actually state the motion so that everybody will be clear of what they vote on. It's not ridiculous. Thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Kimble.
No.
Mr. Murphy.
No.
Ms. Adair.
Yes.
Ms. Sivikovich.
No.
Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
Ms. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Shad.
Madam President, question. This, this issue is not a dead issue, and so it will be coming up again.
That's fine.
So, okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. New business. Ms. Sanderson wanted, and I mentioned this before, she came onto the agenda today to have travel approved, to go to Miami, Florida for the NSBA Q conference in September. I did speak to Mr. Giannetti about this, but he would like a cost first to bring that through with the resolution to vote on you going to that conference.
Doesn't he do the research on the, the level of the travel?
Listen, I don't know what he does, but he, he wants a cost, so you need to discuss that with him. But that's why it's not on here. I just wanted you to know, I didn't forget it. He needs a cost.
So, you know, I haven't traveled this year. So that should be $2,500 that I should have. So it should be uniform, you know, amount.
He did, he, again, he said he needed a cost, and I guess he means how much the conference is gonna cost, the room and the airfare.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, that's exactly what he wants.
I think that's just me putting a bill to him.
Or college.
No, that is not the board's responsibility.
It, it's, it's his responsibility, but again, he needs a cost. So if she's gonna travel, all she has to do is meet with him, and they can look it up, or she can pull, you know, we don't have anybody working for us, and he's supposed to do all this, and maybe he doesn't clearly understand how or what, but he just needs a cost for it. He needs a cost for it. I know that you have, $2,000 is what we have, and then we have that extra. But if the whole trip doesn't cost $2,000. So that's what he's just wanting to cost. So I would say, call him and meet with him ASAP, so he can get a decent price for our airfare.
Madam President, if I may. Carolyn O'Vicki did all of that, and before her, what's-her-face Cathy did all of that. They handled all of the travel. You just let them know what, where, why, and they did all of that. So now, and I've asked, who's, who's doing the job that Carolyn was doing?
And he said he was.
Okay, then he should do it.
Right, so that's why I'm telling her to meet with him.
Just let him know and tell him where you wanna go.
I assume she did that.
No, she didn't do that.
Okay, so when is it you say she has to do it?
I said that for, it was supposed to be for agenda review, but because I get off at 6:00, I can't go to agenda review. So I was asked what I want on air, and it was the resolution for the NSBA Q. And so I was told, I guess, I gotta do the research.
No.
You don't have to research it. Just call him and tell him where you wanna go, and you'll do it.
Because she did meet with, you met with him yesterday.
I told him.
So now he wants me to do the travel plans, like a travel agent, and then get back to him.
You gotta tell him the date you're going and stuff.
Oh, I, I gave him dates and things, but he needs a cost. So you just need to give him. I mean, you can have him sit there and pull it up. You don't have to pull it up, but you need to give him. So we can get it passed.
Are we, are we in new business, Madam President? Still unfinished business?
No.
Okay. Who's, who's responsible for contacting the Warren Tribune and the Business Journal?
I'll have someone do that. I, I called them, you know, before this vote was taken to talk about, when I, when I heard the indicator was gonna close the same day, and they told me like this, they said, "They don't know yet if they're gonna add anybody else to their crew, but we could call them". And so I guess that would be a treasure, to give them meeting dates and things like that. Or not our treasure, but the news, they need to call them before to put any information into the newspaper. They said they would have to have a meeting and decide if they were gonna put anybody else on because that would be more costly to them. So they didn't know if they would have anybody that could actually come to the meeting, but they would at least put our notices out for us. So we would just go through this thick like we have. And the rest they replace them, and I don't know if that's right.
And next question. We voted to, the last tax abatement request that we got, we voted no. And so there was supposed to be a letter. Where is it? Who wrote it? I'd like to see it. And, you know, and has anybody made any comments to what's-her-face at city, city government about how we get those requests about how we get those requests and how much time we have to gather to make a, a, a decision about where, where we wanna go with, with abatement?
I did make a phone call.
Okay.
And I told her just that, that, you know, regardless of our decision made a difference or not, we needed to have time to read and discuss these things. And that in the past, they have been sending them to our homes, and that didn't happen this time, and that's what needed to happen.
Okay.
I think they told me something about there was some new secretary down there that didn't know something or whatever, but I told them that we would like to receive it, you know, in a, a amount of time, and we could discuss it and go over it, and they needed to come back to our home.
Right.
So, they said that they would take care of that, because that's even with the meetings that they have. They called, they don't have them that often, but they called the very last minute, and they said, "Well, we have to get your transcript to you, you know, about what's gonna happen," and I told them, "That's not acceptable." Well, you can't call somebody the day before, or even two days before and tell them, "We're gonna have a meeting at 9:00, you know, at the City Hall." So, hopefully, it'll be taken care of. We had a very long discussion about it, and I told them how.
Who'd you talk to, um?
I talked to, um, Ms. Woodbury, and I also talked to the secretary.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember her name, I'm sorry, I think it's her.
Okay.
You know, because, you know, they had all those things out, because again, when it even came to that meeting, they called like two days before. Said, "We're gonna have a meeting on, at 9:00, and, you know, you don't have the paperwork to read over, so you, you don't know what's gonna happen."
Right.
So, that's unacceptable, and, and they need to, it's, you know, just a matter of doing things in order.
That's correct, yes. Okay. And then, um, we agreed to have, um, have some work sessions. And, um, I mentioned, um, of course, we need to have a finance work session, in the worst way. So, where are we with that?
Well, that, that's for the Board to decide. I, I would say for work sessions, and you know, we can have them, but I would say we need to talk to Mr. Jennings first and see if he's gonna allow folks to come to these meetings and give us information. If he's gonna have administrators come, uh, and give us information, that could be a work session for us. Or at least, maybe we could use a work session after that meeting, so that we have something to discuss.
Well, my, um, and I, I appreciate that, but my issue, the, the last time I spoke about work sessions, it was about, uh, we don't have any minutes to verify this, so I'm going based on my memory and the notes that I took, uh, that we need to have a finance work session like we had earlier in the year. So, Janetti has been coming, but he's gotta come and straighten some stuff out. He's gotta stop being absent and, and avoiding, avoiding the obvious, because I know he does not have, he does not have all the reports that I've, I've requested. Can't speak for the rest of you. So, now, I'm talking about a finance work session, Madam President. And the other, other, um, other folks, yeah, whatever Mr. Jennings can set up, that'll work. But right now, we need a finance work session. And I'll be doggone, I, I, you know, I do have an issue with the commission setting up a finance committee. I got an issue about that. So, you're gonna have a committee with people from outside the district, deal with our finances when we can't even get accurate information about what the heck's going on? So, that, that, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, Madam President. A finance work session like we had, when was the last time we had one? It was earlier this year. It was, it was earlier this year.
Well, the next one about, when were we supposed to have, Mr. Jennings wasn't there, so we just, remember, we had some discussion among ourselves.
Yeah, right, right, right.
But at, at least, I mean, they, I think they changed the chairperson for the finance committee, it's now, um, McGee.
Been, it's been.
And he has, does have folks outside the district, but they're not folks that have contracts with the district as it was when Mr. Santucci had set up.
What they need is a support.
Right, so that, that needs to be, that's what I'm saying, so that needs to be switched.
I could, I, if I write a message, Mr. McGee, in regards to that upcoming meeting being the same night as our Board meeting, um, but yeah, everybody on that committee are, are residents of the city.
Uh, no.
Except for one.
That one guy who's Struthers.
Yeah, he's there as an advisory capacity to explain, um, financial.
He's their treasurer, Struthers treasurer.
He lives in the city.
But he lives in Youngstown. Brightville, he used, yeah.
I don't care where he lives, he works for Struthers.
No, no, actually, now, he's worked for Mohe Gunning person.
Okay, wonderful. That's, that's a whole nother can of worms. So, where are we, where are we in Youngstown? Now, that's, we don't have people that live in Youngstown with those eyes of credentials that he could've put on that commission, on that committee? Come on. No, you can hold your head in your hand if you want to, I'm sick of this. What? Oh, I know, you know, that's not true, because I gave him a name of a person as a degree in economics, and he blew him off, okay? That's not true. That is not true. So, but, okay. I'm, I'm just saying, Madam President, whenever, um, uh, in this finance work session, I think we need, there's so much stuff that we need to talk about in terms of our finances. There's five, six people that have been recently hired, new hires, and, uh, what, what's their salary? What impact is that gonna have on, on our bottom line, on our operating funds? What, what, you know, he, he did riff a few folks to the tune of almost $3 million, but, I mean, you hired now another six people at $100,000 apiece? Or what? So, no, we, we, no, we need, we need more financial information, and I, you know, so that I, and I can't speak for the rest of you, can't present to the people that question me and my community, "What the heck is going on with this, you know, these salaries, Jackie? What's going on, you want more money?" Oh, okay.
Can you pick a date for a special meeting, and then just tell Mr. Janetti he's gotta meet her?
Make sure that, you know, it's a date that he can meet her, because if we have it and he's not there, then we're gonna be sitting.
Well, of course, yes, of course.
Yeah, so, let's talk to him and see what, I, because again, when I spoke to him yesterday, he told me he would be at the meeting today. I just got to.
How many meetings has he missed?
I think I count.
Two minutes. Two minutes. And this, this is getting a little bit tiring. So, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not having this, um, I'm not having a good day.
Well, you looked really pretty today.
Well, thank you. That don't mean nothing. That doesn't mean I'm not having a good day, I'm kinda wearing it down. Yeah, thank you.
You're nice, you got that white piece, your mom matches your shirt.
Yeah, I forget, I'm sorry, man. Now, anyways, thanks, Madam President, for having me see. Um, okay. Um, and, and guys, I don't know if you paid attention. New business. Guess who that is?
Who's that?
That's me talking.
Tina, talking to Bonpa Lo Di Maria.
I invited him to a school board meeting, and he promised he would come, but he's yet to show.
He's not coming.
So, uh, so. So, good for you, though, Tina.
Thank you.
Good for you. Uh, then, again, I hope you were able to get something worth a lot of, uh, empty promise, I guess.
Yeah.
So, so, so when was that? When, when were you down there?
That was...
And what was that, what was that?
This was the, um...
That was in March?
Yeah, this was in...
It was in March.
It was in March.
Were you there for that?
No, I didn't know.
Oh, good, okay.
This was the finance, the...
It was the, um...
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, what was it?
I forgot what's, but I think it was in March.
It was the, it was the, um, about the state, um, the different, uh, laws and stuff, and like how, how the, the House bills and things like that come into effect. And he just got done, um, doing his presentation for the luncheon, and, um, and they came over and interviewed, and, and got me on the microphone, I said, and I made the statement, I said, "Well, since you're so eager to help school districts, why don't you come to Youngstown and fix the mess you created?"
Oh, okay.
And a bunch of people in the room started clapping. And then afterwards, um, me and him spoke, and, and I shared with him how, you know, the, the issues that were affecting Youngstown. And I, again, reiterated that he needs to come to Youngstown and see firsthand exactly what has happened within our school district. And he, he said that he'd be willing to come and sit at our Board meeting and talk to whoever needed to talk to him, and he's yet to, to come.
Did he tell you, Madam President?
Uh, he, he, even, it's not, it's hasn't been that long since we testified in front of the state school board, and he was there. And I told them to get in front of him, that he had not been there, and that we, we've been attempting to get him here since Mohe took his seat. And they told us that, uh, he hasn't forgotten us, but he's working his way down the list. So, I don't know how important he is, but I guess he's still working his way down that list. And even then, he didn't mention, he didn't say that he would come, and he didn't say that he had been invited, and that was, I don't remember when that one was, but it was a long after Tina was at that meeting. So, he's not willing to come, and then he said something about if he came, House Bill 70 is the law, and, and he doesn't wanna hear about some of the things pertaining that's happening to our district, it's because of House Bill 70, so finances and things, that, that all jilt with this leadership, this control. They, they don't wanna hear that, so he didn't come, and he has been invited over and over and over again.
And he has been here too, when Mohe was...
He came, when Mohe first came, I met him in the office and shook his hand, and that was it, and he has not come back. He's not come back. And I don't think he has any plans to come back.
Madam President, point of, point of order. Got really unfinished business, not really new business? Seems like we're just having conversation now.
It's new business, and I, I didn't finish, but it is new business.
Yeah, that has been called, so we...
Oh, I thought we were in this.
We called it.
We're in this.
What, what is the new business before the...
Oh, so, that was my lead-in, this is my lead-in. Just to remind folks, and it should be a continuing business, that when you travel at the expense of the district, you have to bring back a report. And, uh, so, I don't know, again, this, you said you did this in, um, March? So, when you come back, and that's policy, maybe some kind of HR rule or law as well. But when you travel at our expense, you have to bring back a report. Either written, I think that's what, what policy says, policy bylaws. And so, that's the new business, that is the new business, yes. Just to remind everybody, okay? And so, let me see. Uh, and, and the only other thing, uh, Board members, is the ODE review. Did all of you get your copies? The last one, that they did March of, of this year. Did you get your copies? There's a lot, we got dinged, uh, on a lot of stuff, the district got dinged on a lot of stuff. Special Ed was in there, um, Budget Processes was in there, um, some of the same things that they keep repeating. So, I really have to wonder, okay, why do they bother to come, because nothing seems to be getting fixed. So, um, I, I think, you know, some meeting, maybe one of our work sessions, we could sit down and go over, go over the ODE review, and, um, you know, stuff like the five-year forecast and that kind of stuff. So that we, we have a better idea of how to tailor our questions, our concerns, uh, Board plans, uh, moving forward. Because, you know, they got a chance to talk to everybody, I guess they wanted to, unlike us. So, if, if we, if we sit down, if you guys didn't get copies of, then we get the copy.
You got, but you were at that meeting.
No, they took it back.
Really?
Yep, they did not let us keep them.
Not the, not the audit?
Oh, not the audit?
No, they both didn't hear you view of that orange, the...
Oh, yeah. They said that that wasn't the final one, they had to take it back because there was issues with some typos. And they fixed some things that we wouldn't, we weren't gonna be able to get a hard copy until it was finally released, but nobody's...
My dollars, yeah.
So, we haven't got, okay. Okay. Do you have a copy of it, Mr. Rudson, the latest one, the approved one?
Nope. No. I mean, I got what you got, that day, because they gave it to me.
Oh, so you haven't gotten, okay.
No, same thing, no, they, damn it.
Well, that, okay, that gives us a template anyways, I'll use that word. So, we could, you know, and I'm just recommending, I am recommending, as, as part of one of our work sessions, future work sessions, that we take that ODE report, and we go through it. Um, there's, you know, plain language they use for the most part, and their charts and graphs and the doggone thing. Very telling information, folks, and that should help guide us in terms of preparing where we, you know, where we go from, from now on. That's all, Madam President, thank you.
Do you have any other big business?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Kimble?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Zadeer?
Yes.
Ms. Svebekovic?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Shad?
We are adjourned.